Yeah.
But thank you.
Yeah, sure, of course, James.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the February 6th meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I'm Devancha Patel, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Tonight, the Commission will consider the following items: the Joyce Motors site plan, items for 3401 Columbia Pike Form-Based Code Use Permit and associated Form-Based Code Zoning Ordinance Amendments, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan Update, and PC Business. I'd like to share a few logistical points for those members or commissioners participating remotely. We have one commissioner participating remotely tonight. Tonight's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast, Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Verizon, FiOS Channels 39 and 40, and the county website. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference, and please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls upon you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you've spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, please press *6 to unmute. Public speakers, you will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's meeting was required, and we are no longer able to accommodate additional speakers. Speakers will have three minutes to comment. Speaking timer will be displayed on screen by the clerk. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning when 30 seconds are remaining. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, may you, will you please call the first item?
The first item is certification of transferable development rights to be considered for transfer from the Clarendon Barber Shop Building, Land Unit A, located at 1407 and 1411 North Garfield Street, RPC number 15-066023, sending site to the Joyce Motors site located generally at 3201 10th Street North, RPCs 19003001, 010, 011, 012, and part of 19003002, 006, 009, and 016, receiving site as part of SPLN 19-066, as described below for the purpose of historic preservation. The sending site is 2,952 square feet, and the proposed density to be transferred is up to 14,760 square feet of gross floor area, utilizing a multiplier of 500% per Clarendon revitalization district standards Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Section 9.2. Transfer of development rights from the Clarendon Barber Shop Building, Land Unit A, located at 1407 and 1411 North Garfield Street, RPC number 15-066-023, sending site to the Joyce Motors site located generally at 3201 10th Street North, RPCs 19-003-001, 010, 011, and 012, and part of 19-003002, 006, 009, and 016, receiving site as part of SPLN 19-066, as described below for the purpose of historic preservation. The sending site is 2,952 square feet, and the proposed density to be transferred is up to 14,760 square feet of gross floor area, utilizing a multiplier of 500% per Clarendon revitalization district standards Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Section 9.2. SPLN 19-066, or Clarendon LLC for a site plan, site plan number 465, to construct up to 5.87 FAR, including up to 184,714 square feet of residential gross floor area, and up to 3,639 square feet of retail gross floor area in the C3 zoning district under Arlington County Zoning Ordinance Section 7.19, 9.2, and 15.5, located generally at 3201 10th Street North, RPCs 19-003-001, 010, 011, and 012, and part of 19-003002, 006, 009, and 016. Modifications of zoning ordinance requirements include additional density, reduced parking and loading requirements, design requirements, density exclusions, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan. Applicable policies: general land use plan, medium density, mixed use, Clarendon revitalization district note 12, and Clarendon sector plan. And finally, ordinance of vacation to vacate a 2,931 square foot portion of a 12-foot wide public alley located between Wilson Boulevard and 10th Street North at adjacent to 3240 Wilson Boulevard, 3211 10th Street North, and 3201 10th Street North, RPC numbers 13-003-001, 19-003002, and 006, 009, 010, 011, 012, and 016, and to a 1,127 square foot portion of a public street and utility easement on the west side of North Irving Street, and on RPC numbers 19-003-00-10-11-12 with conditions. And we have a staff presentation by Adam Watson.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, and good evening. Just waiting for the presentation. Okay, thank you for standing by. Good evening, my name is Adam Watson, this is the 10th and Irving Street site plan, also known as the Joyce Motors site. Tonight, I'll be covering the items that are listed here on the screen. That includes three items associated with the site plan, which the first two are associated with transfer of development rights from the Clarendon Barber Shop Building, and then the third is the site plan itself, and then item B will be the ordinance of vacation as listed here. So, to jump right in, this site is located in Clarendon, near the intersection of North Irving Street and 10th Street North. It's comprised of the existing Joyce Motors Vehicle Service Establishment, as well as a portion of the service parking lot that previously served the Silverdiner Restaurant. This site is a general land use plan designation of medium density mixed use, which is also under Note 12 of the Clarendon Revitalization District. The zoning is C3 General Commercial District, and there are no proposed changes to either the GLUP designation or the zoning, and both are consistent with each other. To just summarize briefly, the first two items that I mentioned pertain to the, excuse me, the transfer of development rights for full building preservation of the Clarendon Barber Shop Building, which is located off-site at 1407 and 1411 North Garfield Street. The transfer of unused density here is about 14,000 square feet, and in exchange for that, the applicant will be recording a permanent exterior architectural preservation easement over this building, and crucially, this fulfills recommendations, historic, excuse me, historic preservation recommendations of the sector plan. In terms of the site plan, this is an 11-story residential building with ground-floor retail, totaling 5.89 FAR. It has an underground parking garage with 176 spaces, a parking ratio of .64 for residents, .05 for residential visitors, and then one space per 455 square feet for the retail. The retail front's on 10th Street North, by the way. They're also preserving and relocating the historic Joyce Motors facade to the build-to line, as recommended in the sector plan, constructing portions of new 10th Road north to the north of this site, and the alley as well, which is running north-south on the western side of the site. Zoning modifications include additional density, reduced parking and loading, design requirements, and density exclusions. Lastly, the vacations, this is area within an existing public alley and public street utilities easement that is proposed to be vacated and incorporated into the site plan for density purposes. Jumping into analysis of this project, this site is governed and guided by the Clarendon Sector Plan, which was very recently updated last year. A large portion of the sector plan is codified under Article 9.2 of the zoning ordinance, which is the Clarendon Revitalization District. A number of key site requirements are codified, and I've listed some of them here. In terms of preservation, again, historic facade to be preserved and relocated to the build-to line with a 10-foot step back in building mass immediately above that preserved facade. Additional building step backs, which you can see on the map at the bottom right-hand side of the screen, are proposed and required at 75 feet and 95 feet with a maximum building height of 110 feet. Use mix is very flexible here. This building is a mixed-use building, which complies with the sector plan's recommendations, and the applicant's proposal also complies with the dimensional sidewalks and requirements for the streetscape and the build-to lines. In terms of project evolution... Sorry, next slide. Thank you. In terms of the project evolution, we did have a discussion initially with the original submission about the design and treatment of, well, first, the location of the historic facade, which was placed just beyond the build-to lines, and that resulted in a loss of about two feet of sidewalk on both 10th Street North and on North Irving Street. You also had a two-tiered step back above that facade rather than a single 10-foot step back. All of those were inconsistent with the sector plan recommendations. However, working with the applicant, I'm pleased to say that the revised proposal, the current proposal before you, complies completely with the sector plan in this regard. The facade is placed at the build-to lines, we're receiving appropriate sidewalk widths on 10th and Irving, and we now have a single 10-foot step back above the facade, which places greater emphasis on that historic frontage. In terms of zoning and sector plan compliance, this proposal meets all of the Arlington County zoning ordinance requirements, which would include things such as preservation, height, step backs, the use mix, the streetscapes, and the building placement. It also furthers all three overarching goals of the sector plan, which I've listed here on the side of the screen, to name a few: creating and improving walkable streets and streetscapes, respecting the architectural heritage in Clarendon, efficient use of transit and parking, and introducing a wider variety of housing options and retail. Next slide. To earn additional density for this site, the applicant is proposing the following here, which I'll run through briefly: nine onsite committed affordable dwelling units, the majority of which would be family-sized, so one, excuse me, four one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms, up to 60% AMI for a term of 30 years. Additionally, a public open space, monetary contribution just over $557,000. In terms of multimodal transportation, $400,000 towards future planning and infrastructure improvements within the Clarendon Revitalization District, and construction of nearby curb extensions at 10th Street North to aid in pedestrian crossing where the existing rapid-flashing beacon is located. In addition, green building incentive policy, this project is vested under the previous version of this policy, so the applicant's come forward with the 2014 version of this. That includes commitment to lead gold with 15% energy optimization, Energy Star appliances, water sense fixtures, a number of other baseline prerequisites from the new policy as well. In terms of historic preservation, again, preservation, restoration, and relocation of that historic Joyce Motors facade to the build-to line, additional contribution of up to $25,000 for a historic marker or interpretive signage on-site, and full building preservation of the Clarendon Barber Shop Building with density transferred through the TDR. Next slide. We had a robust community engagement process. We had a kickoff meeting back in June for all of the Clarendon projects forthcoming to talk about the changes to the sector plan. We had online engagement in June as well, followed by two SPRC meetings. In terms of commission meetings, the HLRB has discussed this twice in September and November to talk about both of the historic preservation elements of this project. TC considered it last week, on the second, and it was unanimous approval of the vote 7-0, and then Housing Commission will take this up on Thursday. We're headed to the County Board on February 18th. So just briefly, this project really does advance a number of important county goals on a variety of different topics, so I won't read all of this, but again, we're getting nine onsite affordable dwelling units, great historic preservation, both onsite and off-site, construction implementation of new streets as called for in the sector plan, additional activation here at the site with improved streetscapes, sustainable building design, and then again, contributions towards future planning efforts for both transportation and public spaces. So with that, staff's recommendation is to approve both of these TDR motions, adopt the site plan, and then also find that these vacations are substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan of Arlington County, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an applicant presentation followed by public speakers afterward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Andrew Painter, I'm a zoning attorney at the law firm of Walsh-Kalouchi, speaking tonight on behalf of the applicant Orr Partners. Joining me this evening from the Orr family is David Orr and Tyler Orr. Ryan Orr is available participating virtually. Seated to my left is Kevin Crosby, he is our project architect with Antunovic Associates. Nick Cummings with Walsh-Kalouchi is joining virtually, as is our entire design team, who are available to answer questions at the conclusion of the presentation. I'll start off with a couple prefatory remarks, and then I'll turn it over to Kevin to give the bulk of the presentation, but I will start off by expressing my appreciation to staff for their hard work. The number of staff persons involved, the length of the staff report, the number of applications involved is a testament to how intricate this has been. We have been at this project for over three years. We submitted our initial 4.1 in October of 2019, pre-pandemic. We were formally accepted for processing in April of 2020, but the application was placed on hold for over two years pending the outcome of the Clarendon Sector Plan update process. And fortunately now, the sector plan does provide clear, unambiguous guidance on a number of issues, including how to measure step backs, building height tapering, as well as what the proper treatment of the Joyce Motors resource should be. As staff mentioned, this proposal does seek to take a major step forward in the implementation of the new recommendations of the sector plan with the new 11-story building, 241 residential units, and approximately 3,600 square feet of ground-floor retail. One thing I wanted to highlight is sort of the unique nature of this application, is unique in a couple of respects. First is with respect to the land swap that is occurring on this block that is bound by North Irving Street, 10th Street North, and Wilson Boulevard. It's a number of parcels, a number of owners and subowners. The applicant negotiated with two other owners and all of their subowners over a period of year to work out a way to develop this parcel or this block, and to divide it into three developable properties, which you can see here. There was hotly negotiated issues that were discussed, but there is an REA that does cover things like the construction of and maintenance of alleys of 10th Street North, as well as the interconnected below-grade parking garage. To spend a little bit of time also talking about the unique historic preservation nature of the application, we have approached historic preservation in three key areas. The first one, as was mentioned, is we are preserving the historic Joyce Motors facade and incorporating that facade into the proposed building. In fact, even before the submission of our 4.1 application, we spent months working with historic preservation program staff to try to discern the appropriate way to preserve the building and its materials given their condition. The plan that is before you this evening was developed through myriad discussions, and the idea is to preserve the most historic and salvageable portions of the building and incorporating them into the most visually prominent corner of the property after their restoration. A second component of our historic preservation approach has been the $25,000 to an onsite interpretive marker explaining the significance of Joyce Motors. And then the last component is the preservation of the Clarendon Barber Shop Building through the use of the county's TDR program, which is a resource that is specifically recommended under the sector plan. So, all told, we are viewing this as an exciting opportunity to view this 4.1 site plan application as a way to preserve these two assets. In terms of housing affordability, that is figured prominently into our overall approach. We are proposing nine onsite cabs, including four one-bedroom, three two-bedroom, and two three-bedroom cabs to get at affordability, especially for larger households and families. The building will be designed at the lead gold level, and as was mentioned, we are proposing a variety of sidewalk upgrades around the site. We are looking to improve pedestrian crossings across North Irving Street and across 10th Street North, and our parking ratio is in line with county policies for properties that are proximate to Metro Rail. I'll turn it over now to Kevin to walk you through the project architecture, and I will just say that from the very beginning, we wanted to have a 4.1 application that was by the book, that implemented the new sector plan policies. And our architecture also from the beginning was anchored in a design philosophy that was anchored in two respects: one, to ensure that we are compliant with the sector plan, and two, to make sure that there was a design in terms of materials and massing that would echo elements of the Joyce Motors building without competing with it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Great, thanks, Andrew. So the next few slides will highlight the overall project renderings and street views that have been updated per SPRC feedback. And this slide shows the project, let's go back, project location and boundaries, as well as the adjacent Bingham Center project sites. To the south and across 10th Street North are two commercial sites adjacent to the Ashton Heights neighborhood. This slide shows the overall building views at the extreme corners of the project site. Starting at the top left, you have the southeast corner that is a view looking at the historic Joyce Motors and up North Irving Street. To the top right is the northwest corner, which is a view on New 10th Road and from the Bingham Center Hotel site, looking down the new alley. On the bottom left, at the northeast corner, you're standing at basically the Wells Fargo Development Site, looking down North Irving Street at the residential lobby and part of the new 10th Road North. At the bottom right rendering, we are situated on 10th Street North, looking at the retail along 10th Street, and looking up the new alley between the two development properties. The next series of slides will zoom in for sidewalk-level views. You've seen this image of the north of historic Joyce Motors. Again, we worked with staff to address some of their concerns about making sure the preserved and relocated facades have the prominence deserved, and to really honor the essential historic significance of this building. And a close-up of the residential lobby. Our goal here was to make the residential lobby as transparent as possible. This is at the intersection of 10th Road North and North Irving Street, and with the activity planned in 10th Road North, along with the activation of North Irving Street, this became a very prominent corner for, you know, tenant access and overall site development. A view from 10th Street of the retail along that facade, the sidewalk here is 18 feet, which includes a café zone and planting zones, so it's a very generous sidewalk that meets the sector plan requirements, and it's about 3,639 square feet of retail along 10th Street. So this is a close-up view of the sidewalk along North Irving Street. This was a topic brought up in SPRC about adding building warmth and activating North Irving a little bit more. What we did is we went back and looked at how we could provide a little bit more detail on facade at the first two floors and adding additional biophilic elements to really warm up this connection street from the Clarendon area down to 10th Street. So, you know, the biophilic design is central to the Joyce Motors project. This slide really shows all of the biophilic elements that we've got at different levels of the building. You've got the streetscape with the tree plantings and planting strips, as well as the second-level terrace, which will have a bio-retention area, as well as some private patios for the tenants that access that courtyard. At the 10th-level terrace, we have additional trees and plantings that will bring those biophilic elements up to the upper level of the building, and then at the high roof, where we have the mechanical screen wall, will have a large amount of green roof area to help with the stormwater requirements there. And with that, I would give it back to Andrew to talk about sustainability and the other community benefits.
Thank you very much, Kevin. So, as was mentioned, this project is designed at the lead gold level based upon the prior version of the 2014 green building incentive policy. We are utilizing two Arlington Priority Credits. One, we are seeking to do 15% energy optimization, and two, we are doing Energy Star certification. Per our discussion with staff, we have also committed to achieving many of the baseline prerequisites from the current policy as well, which is shown here: energy benchmarking, electric vehicle charging, refrigerant leakage, biophilic narrative, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and Energy Star appliances. Before you is a list of the community benefits that we are proposing in order to earn our density above the baseline of a 3.0 FAR. And I would close by saying that we have made substantial changes over the past three-plus years as we've been at this. And in the final analysis, I think it's fair to say that planning is all about a balance. The approach that we have taken in terms of creativity, I think, has been on the top of mind every day we've been at this. And even though this is a pretty unique site, it does have a lot of potential, it has a lot of design opportunity, but a lot of design responsibility as well. We have shown the ability to be creative by partnering with our neighbors on the alley to do the land swap, by partnering with adjacent owners to preserve the historic facades, and construct a building that will be able to satisfy so many of the county's planning goals. We're very proud of this project, and our entire project team is available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we call our first public speaker?
Our first public speaker is joining us virtually, and it is Bernard Byrne. Bernard, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Your time starts now.
Thank you, and I thank the Chairman for allowing you to speak, because I did come in a little late as a speaker. I didn't, I was aware, no change of plans, of speaking plans. The sheets of the landscape plan show that this project will contain open spaces with garden planting, tree pit planting, bio-retention planting, and roof planting. However, none of these sheets describe the species and locations of any shrubs, ground covers, and perennials that the applicant may plant in those spaces. The applicant needs to add this information to the landscape sheets before the County Board considers the approval of the site plan. It should have been before this meeting. I mentioned it at the site plan review meeting several times. These additions will enable the staff and the public to review this information and to inform the Board of any concerns before or after the Board meeting. To support the County Board's 2017 Bonnet Fledge, each of the above plantings should contain species that support pollinators. To avoid the introduction of invasive species, all plants must be native to Northern Virginia, or at least to the eastern United States. The planted spaces should contain only small numbers of wind-pollinated grasses and sedges. Those types of plants support relatively few pollinators, as compared to those that have flowers that insects pollinate. All planted sunny areas should contain common milkweed, Estepia sirriaca. This is the only plant that grows well and survives in Arlington's natural areas, and that monarch butterflies prefer when laying eggs. Polk milkweed, Estepis exaltana, is an alternative for shady areas. That plant lives in woodlands and woodland edges. The project does not provide enough biophilia, even though there is some, but not enough, nearly enough. To increase biophilia, this roof and all ledges should have planters with native flowering vines that support pollinators. These should hang down or climb up the bare faces of the building, particularly, including the bare face near the southeast corner above the Joyce Motor facade. That's a bare space that really is ugly. The buildings corners should have, additionally, should have climbing vines, or ones that ascend from the roof along the building corners and between the windows. Low fences must survive all tree pits to protect vegetation from trampling.
I'm Majdi Shimali with the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission, and our commission has reviewed the applicant's documentation and presentations in site planning meetings, and we have submitted a letter to include a summary of our findings, as well as the matrix by which we measure the ability, or the ability of the design, to contribute to the county meeting its community energy plan goals. And it is, as stated in our letter, it is clear that it is our evaluation that this project does not meet those minimum energy and sustainability requirements. Overall, the score was 50%, and this is certainly below what we are seeing and what we have been approving in the past from applicants. The success of Arlington meeting its community energy plan in the future depends on the decisions that are made today in terms of locking in certain design features at this stage, that are decisions that are fixed and entrenched for a while, for decades to come. As was mentioned earlier, they are working under the old rebuilding initiative and not the current one. We understand that. They are working on a 15%, and in our letter, we actually have recommendations as to areas of where improvement could be made to improve on that score and to help the county meet its goals. Improvement of energy by 15%, we think that 25% over baseline should be feasible. We see the design locking in natural gas and fossil fuels. For the long run, electrification is always the preferred option, and where not possible, at least the design for electrification in the future, should be considered. We see the EV infrastructure parking, we see the absolute minimum. We would strongly recommend that they improve on that. Some movement towards renewable electricity, but not sufficient.
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. And other sustainable issue, you know, things like bird-friendly glass, dark-skY lighting, and other things. So there is a lot of room for improvement here, and I would urge that the applicant, you know, take a look at the areas where improvements can be made and help the county meet the goals of the community energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shimali. So the matter is now with the commission. Are there any reports from the commissioners, from the other commissions? Commissioner Lynn, tell me.
Yeah, this was before the Transportation Commission last week, and as mentioned by staff, it was voted to be approved, seven to zero. The commission felt it was a pretty solid project. Discussion really was about the vacation of the alleys, which was found to be consistent with the MTP. They are not on the master transportation plan, so the vacation was deemed appropriate. Parking came up. While this is a bit on the high side, given how close it is to the metro, the applicant did state that they are still looking at parking, and this should be considered a maximum, that it could maybe drop as this went its way toward further approvals. Other than that, there was no other real discussion on this matter, and as I mentioned, it was voted on seven to zero to recommend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This matter, Commissioner Hughes chaired the process for this matter. Did you have me? Okay. Commissioner Hughes, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me and see me?
Yeah, well, I can hear you, and I can see you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I'm not able to join you all tonight in person, but I appreciate each of you doing virtual. We did have this meeting, this over the summer last fall. Let me pull my notes here for a second, sorry. And it was a very productive meeting, beginning, of course, with virtual and online kickoff, following through with two subsequent in-person meetings that provided substantive improvement on the site based on the initial submission. So I do want to thank the applicant for making changes based on the SPRC's feedback. In the end, the predominance of our conversation revolved around, I'll use three main areas of conversation. One, which is the architecture, the setbacks, the nature of the setbacks, and how they build to the pedestrian environment. Two, the transportation, and the interconnected and blended parking garage beneath the structures, because this site will be dependent on subsequent sites for circulation in the future. And then the final one is, of course, the various community benefits, including the TDR, which is the preservation of the barber shop and the Clarendon Sector Plan, and the various LEED issues around the submission of the proposal in 2019. I believe those are the predominant areas that we should just focus our discussion on this evening, Commissioner Mattel, unless my fellow commissioners see otherwise, and believe we should have a very productive conversation on this one.
Thank you very much. So I hope everybody saw the memo that was sent around by Commissioner Hughes. The major areas for conversation that he's articulated in his memo are architecture, transportation, community and community benefits. Are there any other points that the, yes, Commissioner Guerin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we add the landscaping plan?
Okay. So we will add landscaping as number four. Anything else?
Could I suggest that go under architecture? It's most related to the architecture. It'll become obvious in the conversation.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's begin with the discussion. Number one, architecture.
Now, Andrew, can I just really, I forgot to mention, I do want to really quick say thank you to Commissioner Schroll and my fellow commissioners previous to me, who did a lot of heavy lifting with the sector plan update. I would be remiss if I did not say that this particular SPRC builds on a long-term community process that was many years in the making, so, sorry, I wanted to make sure that was said vocally, so, thank you.
No, thank you very much. So, architecture, why don't we just go ahead and start with landscaping plan?
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to follow up on Mr. Byrne's comments. We've heard these in many, many of our discussions, and I just wanted some clarification from staff. And my understanding was that the urban forestry team reviews the landscaping plan at some point prior to any planting. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And I believe this is still the current process, but we have a list of invasive plants that are not permitted to be planted in the county. That's correct as well?
Yes, also correct.
I do seem to remember earlier site plans sometimes did include more detailed landscaping. I also know that when we had discussions about this at PC, we were told that can be kind of complicated, because that means you have to put in orders for your plants years in advance of actually being prepared to plant them. Is this a current practice, that we're going to get these sort of more, this landscaping plan looks like it has a lot of the canopy trees on it, for example, and those are specified, and some of the smaller trees, the understory trees, but beyond that, there's no specificity? And that's just best practice right now?
Well, yeah. Locking in the species requirement is not required on the preliminary landscape plan, which this is. We welcome, you know, knowing what the species are.
No, that absolutely makes sense, and we've had these conversations in the past. So can you just share with us the sense of when we do get the final landscape plan and what that process is for the comfort of Mr. Byrne and others who are worried that something, that we, something noxious might be planted?
Yeah, sure. So I think it's Condition 21 of the standard site plan conditions lay all this out in a lot more detail, but the basic gist of it is, is they are required to submit a final landscape plan, which is even more detailed than what we have here before us today. It needs to first comply with what was approved, and then it goes into a lot greater detail, and it goes through review, not only through the urban forester, but also through our landscape architects and CPHD as well, before being, you know, finally signed off on, assuming that it complies with all of the things that you just mentioned about species and other county standards about planning and landscaping.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great comfort. Thank you.
Any other questions on landscaping? Okay, how about the historical facade preservation and plaque? Thoughts, questions? Ideas, comments? Okay, wonderful. Setback facade, street level activation. Oh, Commissioner Peterson?
I just wanted to ask about the estimate of $25,000 to install a plaque, and if somebody can just explain why a plaque costs $25,000, that would be helpful to me.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a plaque. It's going to be a historic marker or interpretive signage, onsite, publicly accessible. It can be up to $25,000. It doesn't necessarily need to exceed that, but it will be subject to HALRB review prior to approval of that. And then the applicant may want to respond to that as well.
And just, yeah, just to respond briefly, we had talked about a variety of different things, whether it was a plaque, whether it was actual things and set in the concrete, sort of talkers as you're walking through the, you know, through the property or past the building. So we will have to work with HALRB, you know, post 4.1, on what that looks like, and, you know, obtain county approval at that point.
Commissioner Muir?
Yeah, I want to, this is actually a really good question, and I think people often complain about the cost of building things and doing things. So for my own benefit, when people ask me about it, I want to drill down a little bit on this. Are we talking fees? Are we talking materials? Are we talking staff salary? If it's not fees, like, what are the actual cost inputs that get to, you know, when you buy a plaque to give to one of your coworkers who's retiring after 30 years of service, it costs 40 bucks from the guy that you buy tchotchkes from? So, you know, explain, distinguish these two things from us, please.
No, my understanding is it's $25,000, and that'll be the hard cost associated with whatever installation we come up with, and it could be a variety of things. It could be a sign, it could be a plaque, it could be the, you know, the embedded in the concrete as you're walking past, but that's the amount of money that we are committing to, you know, to provide for that, you know, for that resource. It's not staff time. It's the actual hard cost of the installation of the materials.
Okay, any other comments on this point? All right. How about the setback facade, street level activation? No? All right. Number two, transportation, total site configuration and synergies. Thoughts, questions, ideas, comments? Wonderful. Community benefits, TDR, historical preservation and Clarendon Sector Plan. Okay. LEED. Commissioner Scholl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for staff here, more about the application of the Green Building Incentive Program. Mr. Painter noted that this was accepted in 2019 under the old program, and obviously they're following those guidelines in addition to incorporating some additional priority credits, and we thank you for that. In response to what this kind of C2, E2 has commented this evening, I'm wondering, Mr. Watson, if you could maybe walk through what the staff process is for older site plans that are accepted by the county manager or by staff, but then sit for a number of years, and we have a change in policy. When is staff really pushing to kind of get more out of these policies? When is it not the county's policy to do that? I think it'd be helpful to sort of understand that in light of, you know, a new push for the community energy plan.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the answer to the second part is, we push for it now, and we did push for it. And I think that was even discussed at SPRC and outlined in the SPRC reports prior to that. That being said, in this particular case, there's a very clear cutoff for projects that are vested under the previous iteration of the policy, and I think, you know, moving forward, when you have any policy that's being updated, usually that's set forth in the staff report, if not in the document itself. And so in this case, that cutoff, I think, was like March or April of 2020, so it was very clearly vested. That being said, we strongly encourage the applicant to follow the new policy and to do all the prerequisites there, which they've done, I think, more than half of here. So, again, you know, it's a voluntary program, and they're definitely fulfilling the 2014 version of that, and then going a little bit beyond that and doing some of the newer ones as well.
That's helpful. And then I will have a question for the applicant along those lines, but Mr. Watson or Mr. Pfeifer, I'm wondering how many site plans or 4.1s have been accepted by the planning department, but under the old policy, but have yet to come through Site Plan Review Committee?
Sure. Commissioner Scholl, this is Matt Pfeifer with the Planning Division. This is the only one. This was a unique and one-off situation. As Mr. Watson explained, you know, the Green Building Incentive Policy in 2020 was approved with a policy that it goes into effect on a certain date, and so it is our policy then, in fairness, that those projects that were accepted prior to that implementation date utilize the older version of the policy. And as Mr. Watson explained, you know, we did push the applicant very hard in this case to, you know, implement some of the measures of the new policy, and they've done so. So we're comfortable moving forward with where they're at.
That's helpful. Mr. Painter, question for you, if I might. On the electric vehicle parking, you have 4% EV SE and I think 15% EV-ready. Is there any ability to exceed that, particularly on the EV-ready, within the electrical capacity in the building?
Just had a conversation with the applicant. We're happy to look at that between now and board, see if we can do better.
Yeah, that's helpful. Just also, as a cost-saving measure for you, as you're thinking about this in the future, it's, I've seen estimates in reports that it can be six times more expensive to add it later. So, you know, if you're thinking about doing it, and a lot of that is the electrical capacity, so I understand, but it's also, you know, running conduit and opening up walls, which, so that's helpful. I guess the other one was the bird-friendly glass. I was wondering if you could speak to your conversations with staff along those lines. I saw in the, in the site plan conditions that those provisions were struck out and are not applied to this portfolio, so I was wondering if you, what your conversations have been with staff on that?
Yeah, we've had a couple of conversations with them. That was one of the baseline prerequisites under the new policy that we just were not able to commit to doing. I don't know, Kevin, if you want to speak to that at all.
We did elect not to meet that requirement, but we are willing to go back and take a look and see what our options are and continue that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I know you're also incorporating a historic facade and some of the things that, the first floor, you know, maybe it's not the entire building, but, you know, something to maybe look at with staff. So, all right, well, I appreciate it. Thank you. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bagley?
Yeah, I would just like to encourage you to revisit the bird-friendly issue. It's a really big issue. We live very close to a migratory area here. There's a lot of glass in that building, so whatever you can do to revisit that, that would be very welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Chair, may I recognize Mr. David Orr?
Sure.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excuse me. It's near and dear to our hearts. We want it to. The problem is, the frit in the glass is enormously expensive. Let's see if we can come up with some ideas and work with staff on it. We certainly want to protect the birds. Trust me, we realize that two-thirds of the species have gone away in the past decade or so. It's troubling to us, and so we'll do everything we can, but the specifics of the bird-fritted glass is economically infestable. Maybe we can come up collaboratively with another way. We'd like to try.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerin.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Perhaps you can work with staff, because we regularly ask this of all of the applicants now, and they've been able to comply, so there might be some options that you're not aware of. And certainly, the least expensive option is to have a policy of turning out the lights in the building for a certain period of time.
Yeah. I mean, I remember the old days of the stickers on the windows, right? I mean, so, and we're happy to do that, right? But right now, the specification is a little tough, but I will tell you, staff has been enormously helpful in working with us throughout the entire three years of this journey. throughout the entire three years of this journey. And so I, I don't anticipate anything less and we'll have a good outcome.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on this point? Any comments? Okay, affordable housing. Affordable housing, Commissioner Peterson? Oh, Commissioner, wait, Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for including some of the larger size units in the building that can fit families. The three bedrooms are a bit more suitable to families as my colleague Commissioner Hughes on virtual will probably remind everyone, if I don't, that if a family has a, a son and a daughter, then they wouldn't qualify to be in the two-bedroom units. So the three-bedroom units are much appreciated and anything we can do to get the larger sizes to fit more families would be great. Thank you.
We heard the staff loud and clear on that and, and it resonated with us and we recognized the importance of three-bedroom units to the CAF community. And so we did that.
Commissioner Lintomi?
Commissioner Peterson said what I was going to say. So again, thank you very much for the, this is great.
Okay.
Commissioner Hughes has his hand raised.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Hopefully I'm visible. Commissioner Patel, am I visible now for everyone?
Now you are.
Perfect. I, I have to also, first of all, make just known that this is the applicant choosing to go above and beyond and, and make that contribution onsite, which is beyond appreciated and a step above many of our proposals that come in. So it just needs to be applauded more to say the personal commitment from an applicant to show this sort of commitment towards an inclusive community should be well-recognized. And this commissioner, for one, is very appreciative of it. Thank you, Commissioner Patel. I yield back.
Thank you. Okay, and I think that we had a conversation at the last commission meeting where we discussed the need for a cultural shift on affordable housing and having applicants provide more than what's necessary. So thank you very much for that. Last point that's been identified by Commissioner Hughes is the relationship and contribution to community open space improvements. Any questions, ideas, comments or thoughts? Commissioner Lintomi?
I'm happy with the contribution. I just, and this is not for the applicant, it's actually more for, for staff and probably for Parks and Rec, is that the, across the street is the county-owned property that has been promised for quite a long time to the community to be a park. And this is next to the fire station and behind the telephone building. I would hope that most, if not all, of this contribution will be earmarked for that site, that it can in fact be developed. It's been quite a long time since the Clarendon Sector Plan was made and the park was envisioned as part of that, and we still don't have it. And that was something that came up as part of the Clarendon Sector Plan update. And I think that we really do need to move ahead with getting that space to be programmed for the community as, as park space. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes, I'm going to turn this over to you. Do you have some motions?
I do, Commissioner Patel. We are going to start with vacations because we all want to go on one and then we'll move on to the regular motions, if that's okay with staff.
That's perfect. Thank you.
All right. That's the one. I recommend that the Planning Commission find that the vacation of, one, a 2,931 square foot portion of a 12-foot wide public alley located between Wilson Boulevard and 10th Street North, adjacent to 3240 Wilson Boulevard, 3211 10th Street South, 10th Street North, and 3201 10th Street North. and 19-003-016. And two, a 1,127 square foot portion of a public street and utilities easement on the west side of North Irving Street on RPC numbers 19003009, 19003010, 19003011, and 19003012, with conditions, is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan of Arlington County, Virginia.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lintomi? And then just a point of clarification, just to be clear, it's 3211 10th Street North and not 10th Street.
10th Street.
Right, okay. Any additional discussion? Okay, let's go for a vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lintomi?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries 10 to 0. Commissioner Hughes, second motion, please.
All right. And after reading those RPCs, I can't appreciate more than negotiations upon all these parties to get this all done. Let's go up to the next one. Here we go. The next one. Why move my scroll?
Would you like?
I'm going to read them all, I'm going to do all three in one. Is that okay, Commissioner Patel? You approve the three approvals and they're counting their own conditions?
That's fine, well.
Staff are shaking their head, okay?
Is that okay if, if we read all three at one time? Given our discussion today?
I'm not 100% sure what the answer to that is, Madam Chair, but, you know, I advise caution in this regard and you may want to just make separate marching.
Yeah, let's make it separately.
It's fine.
We do, yeah.
I move the Planning Commission recommend that the county board approve the attached resolution certifying 1,000, 14,760 square feet of GFA, a transfer of development rights from 1407 and 1411 North Garfield Street, sending site for the purpose of historic preservation.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl, seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just, may?
Sure.
Just on this, this issue of, of doing these separately, it would be my recommendation in the future to do these separately. Particularly in this case, if we didn't agree that the sending site for the TDR was appropriate, then the rest of this falls apart. And so, so these should be done separately.
Right, okay. Any discussion on this motion? Wonderful, let's, let's vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lintomi?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries 10 to 0. Commissioner Hughes?
I move the Planning Commission recommend the county board approve the attached resolution transferring 14,760 square feet of GFA from 1407 and 1411 North Garfield Street, sending site to Site Plan SPLN 19-0006, Site Plan Number 465, receiving site.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any conver, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lintomi?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries 10 to 0. Last one, Commissioner Hughes.
I move the Planning Commission recommend the county board adopt the attached ordinance for Site Plan SPLN 19-0006, Site Plan Number 465, to permit construction of up to 5.87 FAR, including up to 184,714 square feet of residential GFA and up to 3,639 square feet of retail GFA, located generally at 3201 10th Street North. RPCs numbers 19-003-001 and 19-003-010 and 19-003-011 and 19-003-012, and part of 19-003-002, 19-003-006, 19-003-009, and 19-003-016, with modifications of zoning ordinance requirements, including additional density, reduced parking and loading requirements, design requirements, density exclusions, and other modifications as necessary to achieve the proposed development plan, subject to the conditions of the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any discussion?
Right. Madam Chair? Just want to say quickly that I appreciate the applicant working through this process. I know it's been a long time and appreciate your participation in the LRPC and the SPRC, you know, working to incorporate the historic facade. And it's always nice to get to this stage. And we had, you know, we had citizen comment, but it was kind of very productive, I think, comments this evening. And that's an indication of the collaborative nature that got us to this point. So, so thank you for that. And thank you to Commissioner Hughes for leading this process and also to staff for your work over this long process as well.
Commissioner Hughes has his hand raised.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
I, I don't think I could say it any better than Commissioner Scholl, but I also, as I said before, Commissioner Scholl standing on the shoulder of giants with the sector plan update. And then I also do have to say, I think this is the third building. I've worked in my time over eight years with Orr partners in various ways and they are always a fabulous applicant. We're, I think, a blessed community to have them. And I think we're seeing the blessing in the community benefit package that's presented to us this evening. So I look forward to this, moving forward to the county board. Thank you, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lintomi?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye. The motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Watson and team. Thank you. Have a wonderful night. Madam Clerk, will you call the second item, please?
Item number two is FBCN 22-00001 and FBC-28 MCP 3 Arlington LLC for a use permit to construct a mixed-use project containing 250 residential dwelling units and 5,000 square feet of retail. Application includes associated amendment in the commercial form-based code to change the town center regulating plan from a local main street building envelope design standard designation along eastern side of South Lincoln Street where the subject property is located. Property is approximately 63,141 square feet located at 3401 Columbia Pike. Applicable policies include the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code and in ordinance to vacate a portion of a 12-foot alley running southwest from South Glebe Road towards South Lincoln Street along the parcel lines between Lot 9 and parts of Lot 1, Lots 1, 2, 12, and 13, Block 1, Alcoa Heights, known as 3401 Columbia Pike, Arlington, Virginia. With conditions, we have a staff presentation by Matt Matusik, followed by an applicant presentation.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Matusik, if you're ready?
Yep, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Let me just get this going. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
All right. Just preserve bandwidth for a second. All right. So good evening, for the record, I'm Matt Matusik with the Planning Division. I'm joined this evening by Robert Gibson and Betsy Herbst from the Department of Environmental Services. And I'm going to introduce the items associated with the 3401 Columbia Pike property and highlight the review process which took place over the last 12 months before handing things over to the applicant for a more detailed proposal presentation. And the 3401 Columbia Pike is located at the northwest corner of Glebe Road intersection in Columbia Pike. It falls within the limits of the commercial form-based code depicted here in the darker hatch throughout the Columbia Pike corridor. You can also see the light red or pink areas depicting the other neighborhoods form-based code boundaries which surround the commercial form-based code. The site itself is located within the Alcoa Heights neighborhood and borders with two other adjacent civic associations at this prominent intersection. For the last several decades, the site has been occupied by a four-story office building supported by surface parking and a drive-through bank. I'm now going to spend a brief moment explaining the content on this slide because it involves some unique terminology and layers of standards that are intended to guide redevelopment on this property. One of the key regulatory elements found in the form-based code is the regulating plan comprised of a series of maps that indicate the vision for each property eligible to redevelop in this district. This exhibit provides an excerpt of the Town Center map, which represents the vision for the eastern part of the corridor within that commercial form-based code. On these maps, properties are designated by one of four distinct frontage types, grouped under the code's building envelope standards, each depicting through a solid fill color on the public streets surrounding the property of what that vision is. 3401 is generally surrounded by the main street designation, this is the one that's shown in red, where mixed-use developments of up to six stories in height are permitted. The current regulating plan also depicts a blue hatch in portions of Lincoln Street, which correspond with the local designation that typically calls for a residential use of up to three and a half stories in height. This relationship between the two frontage types has been carefully analyzed throughout last year as the proposed amendment to this map was requested by the applicant in the context of the redevelopment proposal. Following internal review by staff and informed by several massing diagrams, sunshade studies, and the assessment of similar transitions throughout the corridor, the proposed amendment was considered by the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group and the zoning committee, where general support was expressed. The proposed change would be captured by the regulating plan map and only apply within the limits of the subject property on Lincoln Street. The change would better enable redevelopment on this property while still meeting the intent of the form-based code by ensuring the proposal complies with the existing form-based code height transitions prescribed for the edge conditions such as this one, where you meet the revitalization district boundary towards the north. Incorporating the amendment into this analysis helps us establish a number of criteria that were utilized in the staff's review of this proposal. I won't go through all of these, but the list on this slide captures some of the key elements of a typical main street site in that commercial form-based code. Staff has determined that the proposal is consistent with the commercial form-based code standards and no modifications have been requested by the applicant. The proposal is required to be considered by the Planning Commission and the county board whenever the site area exceeds 40,000 square feet, as it has here, or the proposed building footprint exceeds 30,000 square feet, as this one had. A more in-depth review of the form-based code regulations can also be found in the attached form-based code checklist, which was posted online along with our staff report. In addition to the form-based code amendment and the use permit, staff is also recommending the vacation of a existing 12-foot alley that runs east-west through the middle of the existing property. Since its original dedication and subsequent office development that came in the 1960s, the alley has not been used and is not identified on the mass and transportation plan. The proposed development would be delivering a new rear alley along the northern edge of the site from which parking and loading access will be provided. Staff began to meet with the applicant in early 2022 before initiating the form-based code amendment process. As that element was advertised in the fall of last year, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group and the local community conducted additional meetings to review the development proposal. This month, all of the associate items are coming together for consideration by the county board and other relevant commissions. As a result, staff's recommendation is that the county board, one, adopt the form-based code amendment, two, approve the form-based code use permit, and three, find that the proposed alley vacation is substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
We have an applicant presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Lauren Riley. I'm with Walsh Calucci and we represent the applicant in this case, Marcus Partners. I'm joined tonight by my colleague Kathy Puskar Tess Crane with KGD Architecture and Yuri Blazer with Marcus Partners. The rest of our design team is also with us as well behind me. I thought Mr. Matusik did a thorough job of summarizing our proposed project and the associated applications, so I'll attempt to move through these slides quickly for you all. Here. Here you can see the proposed sites outlined in blue and the Columbia Pike Commercial Form-Based Code district boundaries outlined in black. I'll note briefly that- I'll note briefly that you can see there's a triangular portion of the property that judged above the commercial form-based code district. This area right now is an asphalt driveway leading you into the bank site and is not included within the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code district. And I'll speak a little bit more about how we're incorporating this parcel into our project in just a moment. The site today sits at the corner of Columbia Pike and South Glebe Road, and it's surrounded by three other form-based code projects, Pike 3400 to the south, Gillian Place to the west, and the Westmont Project to the east, which is well underway in construction. And so this new proposed building will complete this third corner of the prominent intersection in Columbia Pike in the town center. Walking around the site today, you'll see the existing four-story Bank of America office building and the Bank of America drive-through there at the top left of your screen off Lincoln Street. And for any Bank of America existing customers who may be tuning into the Planning Commission hearing tonight, it's our understanding that the Bank of America branch and drive-through will be moving across the street to the old Capital One Bank site. So no need to worry. You'll still have your banking services there, just across the street. And you can see on the left side of your screen, too, there's a Wendy's drive-through next to the property that is not included in this application and will remain as is. And so those two buildings that sit on the property today that are set back far from the streets, surrounded by all that surface parking, those were actually approved in 1969 as Site Plan Number 49. And then they were developed in the early 1970s. So that's how long, that's how far this site dates back. And so the applicant welcomes the opportunity here to implement the vision of the form-based code and bring the proposed building closer to the street, defining that urban street edge and further activating this area of Columbia Pike. As Mr. Matuzik noted, this site is located within the Columbia Pike Town Center Regulating Plan. It has Main Street frontage on all three sides, on South Glebe Road, on Columbia Pike, and wrapping the corner there up to South Lincoln Street. And you can see there's a small portion of South Lincoln Street that is designated as local frontage. As Mr. Matuzik noted, with this project, the applicant is requesting a form-based code amendment to the Town Center Regulating Plan to extend that Main Street frontage a little farther north. As you can see on the left of your screen, the code currently allows for a 50-foot extension of that Main Street frontage. But that would leave an awkward 57-foot stretch of local frontage on that street. And given how narrow that area is, it is not feasible to develop a local frontage building at that location. And so rather than leave this corner with a blank street wall there, the applicant is proposing to amend the form-based code to carry that Main Street frontage a little further north, which will allow for a more consistent building facade on Lincoln Street. It's also will better align with that Main Street frontage on South Glebe Road. As you can see, it extends all the way up to the northern property line on that side. And it will also allow for a design that better meets the spirit and intent of the form-based code. Additionally, I'll note that the same setback and step-back requirements for the new development will apply here as the same height restrictions apply in both the local frontage and Main Street frontage designations. Here you can see our rendered site plan with the proposed open space and streetscape improvements and the proposed building footprint. As Mr. Matuzik noted, the site is larger than 40,000 square feet and the building footprint is a little larger than 30,000 square feet. So these two things require a form-based code use permit to be approved with this project. There are no modifications associated with this proposal. The proposed building itself will be six stories in height. It'll have 250 residential units and about 40, a little over 4,500 square feet of ground floor retail space there at the corner of Columbia Pike and South Glebe Road. There'll also be two and a half levels of parking and a below-grade garage. And the streetscape around the site will be improved in accordance with the form-based code standards with this project. And you can also see on the top left there that triangular out parcel that I mentioned earlier. On the left of your screen now, you can see its current condition, which is an impervious asphalt driveway. And as I said, this site is not located within the commercial form-based code district and is not subject to the form-based code regulations. However, the applicant will not leave an impervious asphalt driveway there as the condition moving forward. They do propose to renovate this area with additional green space and plantings that will provide a transition and additional buffering from the new form-based code building to the neighbors to the north. So to summarize, the applicant requests a form-based code amendment to bring that Main Street frontage a little farther north along South Lincoln Street. It proposes a form-based code use permit to allow the proposed building. And as Mr. Matuzik mentioned, the applicant also requests vacation of a portion of that public alleyway, which is no longer needed, and the vacation is required in order to implement the proposed project. And so with that, I'll hand it over now to Ms. Crane with KGD Architecture to walk you through the building design.
Thank you, Lauren. Good evening, everyone. As she said, my name is Tess Crane and I'm with KGD Architecture. I'll be walking through the building design tonight. Wanted to start on the site plan and again just point out that we do have three adjacent neighbors that have already developed under the form-based code. And we took this development in mind when creating our design to make something that is both complementary and unique, completing kind of the redevelopment of this corner. Looking at the ground floor plan, this is our plaza level. I would like to start walking you around the building at the northeast corner on Glebe. You can see the blue area here is all residential lobby and amenities space fronting Glebe Road. And then as we get to the primary intersection, which is Glebe Road and Columbia Pike, this is where we've located the retail for the site, where it gets the prominent visibility and connection with the most pedestrians. As you continue to move around the site, we do have a frontage on South Lincoln Street, which is a secondary lobby for the residential and provides additional amenities space fronting the street and provides access to our rear alleyway, which brings you to the loading dock and then dips down below the grade to enter into the parking below the plaza level, which will be a little bit more clear when we get to the elevation of that north facade. On this level, we have 18 residential units and an exterior courtyard, which will have communal space as well as a pool. On the left here, we're looking at Level 1. The retail space and amenities space will be taller spaces. So Level 1 is only a partial level, which has 26 units. And then Level 2 is a complete level, housing 42 units. And on Level 2, you can see where the building steps back to meet that neighborhood step-back of 40 feet from the property line. So units facing that north property have private terraces facing towards the neighborhood zone. Continuing to move up through the building, Levels 3 through 5 are typical levels. And then at Level 6, we step back, creating another terrace area facing the Lincoln Street frontage. This is the roof plan. The rooftop for this project is a completely unoccupied space, only housing mechanical equipment, pads for future retail, mechanical equipment as that becomes designated, and just elevator and stair overrun and access points. Now we will look at the elevations and walk around the building, beginning with the Columbia Pike elevation. On the bottom left here, you see a convenience access to the garage. And then the rest of the ground floor is the retail frontage facing Columbia Pike. The residential above is defined with both light gray brick and a dark levitating cube that really defines our corner element at Columbia Pike and Glebe. We held strictly to the building envelope standards while trying to, while using a creative approach that was both complementary and contrasting to the neighbors adjacent to us. And while also meeting the complete and discrete vertical facade composition requirements. As we move around the building to the west, this is the Lincoln Street frontage. You can see how we've begun to step down the massing, not just with the 40-foot setbacks to the neighbors, but also by creating the taller element to the south, closer to Columbia Pike, and then stepping down by changing materials. Here you also see the storefront maintaining the activation of the Main Street frontage along Lincoln Street. Now we are viewing the north facade. The lower portion of this elevation is just a partial elevation to show the fence and screening from the adjacent properties. And the upper full elevation shows how the alleyway dips down to provide access to the below-grade parking garage. To the right, you can see the entrance to the loading and trash areas. And again, this will be fenced and screened so that there's no light pollution affecting our near neighbors. Also, as you see, there's exterior balconies in this location, but all exterior fixtures will be dark sky compliant. And finally, looking at the Glebe Road elevation. Here you can see the residential amenities space, main lobby at the center of the building, and retail towards the left corner. And then looking at the renderings, this rendering is taken from the intersection of Columbia Pike and Glebe. And you can see how the cube element that we've defined on the corner really levitates above the retail. So the idea was to kind of create a sense of place and massing in the corner without using a tower, which is the architectural element that the adjacent projects have used. And a frame is created by the reflective metal panels that are being used with the transparent storefront. And that metal frame continues up both sides of the cube in a corrugated metal material. And then there is a more traditional expression of that kind of residential tower further up Glebe that connects along with the darker brick-colored base. As we zoom in to look at that retail, we can see how the levitating cube really provides an opportunity to create a moment of pause on the sidewalk, connect with the pedestrian scale. We are using an accent color that is a copper terracotta color to really highlight the soffit area and downlighting and signage that will really draw the eye to the retail and the associated activity. Looking, this is on Columbia Pike, looking back towards Glebe. And it just allows you to see a little bit more closely the materials, including how we've framed the windows here on the levitating cube with that accent color. Moving around the building to the Lincoln Street. Here you can see kind of in the bottom right, the corner of the Wendy's parking lot. And there will also be fencing at this location. And the massing steps down towards the new planting that we'll be creating in the single-family neighborhood. Finally, looking at the Glebe elevation, I'd like to point out that there is a gap in the street trees because we have a bus stop with two shelters that is incorporated with part of the streetscape design for this. And that has gone into the planning for the main residential entrance location, which is mid-block. And here is a closer view of that main residential lobby and the canopy, which again ties into that copper color that is being used to accent the corner cube. And this completes our presentation for the evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
There are no public speakers for this item.
Okay, so the matter is with the commission. Any commission reports? Okay, Commissioner Hughes, this matter was with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. While I can line, and for my own conversation and hopefully Emma will be able to facilitate this. If Matt could get the map of the two form-based codes up for me, that would help me very much greatly. And if the applicant would mind getting the triangular lot image up, I think that would also help me for a second. So Matt, yours first, if you don't mind putting that on screen. I really do want to have that sort of visual to help the conversation here. I'm pulling up my notes here. Give me a second, please, folks. I apologize. So I always lead introductions to form-based code developmental, no, Matt, the two codes, the map with the two codes, the hatch codes, if you don't mind. He's priority going there. Sorry, Matt. And if it's already up and I'm just lagging, I apologize to all. See if my phone's better. Thank you, Matt. I always like to begin conversations with the, with our form-based code development projects with a reminder to my colleagues. And I was even reminded this evening of how important it is to remind my colleagues that there are two form-based codes that cover the entirety of the entire length of Columbia Pike. They work synergetically. Each one has different requirements. Some things are obvious to folks. Some things are less obvious inside of the difference variations. But they do work in synergy for each of them. So it's just, I know Matt was really brief and it may have just things, but this evening's proposal is within the commercial form-based code in one of our nodes. And it is, was our first code. And then afterwards, later on, the second code, which is the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code, was adopted to create the entire length of the Pike. And I always say, they work together. They are a contract with the community. And they are seen as such. And as a reminder, the only reason we're hearing this this evening, and it's not otherwise approved by the zoning administrator, is a function of the fact that the site area is so large and the building size exceeds the minimum. Otherwise, the goal is for it to be a by right development, subject to the zoning administrator, if every checkbox is met. So I just want to remind everyone of that. If the applicant wouldn't mind putting up real quickly, the transition it has on the triangular parcels, there's a beautiful picture, I believe, they showed the future. Thank you. Thank you. I really do appreciate this. So folks, this is an image I want to remind you of. I want you all to see it as my fellow commissioners. And then to note that we had no public speakers this evening. The reason that that is a possibility is because of the contract with the community formed by those two codes and how they work synergetically. So I just want to always remind folks, this is a low residential development on the left-hand side of our picture. And then on the right-hand side will be the development within our form-based code. So it's always important to remind folks that the Pike has a contract with development that is quite, I think, universally associated and approached down the entire unity of the 11 civic associations. And it's seen through that how much that contract is. This evening's proposal, I think, is very interesting. So I think the outline of conversation context are subjects revolve around site context and adjacencies, specifically if any questions outside of the thing, the corner lot there. And I also want to bring the changes in height notch and setbacks to see if anybody has questions around those and any other general form-based code compliance. And before we turn over, Commissioner Patel, I want to just first say that I, for one, and I know many of my other AUG members are excited to see this building get built for the predominant reason of the fact that it's different. And the materiality and the architecture of it is something we have yet to see on the Pike. And so I think we're a little excited to see that. So with that, Commissioner Patel, I turn it back over to you and to my fellow commissioners.
Okay, wonderful. So we have all received Commissioner Hughes's memo. And the areas that have been identified by Commissioner Hughes for conversation are site context and adjacencies, and then general form-based questions on compliance. Are there any other areas for discussion? Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Are you going to do commission reports?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commission reports.
This was before the Transportation Commission last week.
I thought I had asked for commission reports. I'm sorry.
Maybe I missed it.
I think it was you, Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
This was before the Transportation Commission last week for the sole purpose of the occasion of the Phantom Alleyway, which is just on paper and no record of it ever having been vacated is anywhere in the record. So we did find that it is consistent with the master transportation plan and voted 7 to 0 to approve the vacation. So, you know, that's done. The only discussion really was sort of related in that there are, this is not the only Phantom or county right-of-way that or county right-of-way that has effectively been privatized, and we noted that that does exist throughout the county, and that's something we really should be dealing with, but that is not an issue in this case. So, that's the report of the Transportation Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other areas of discussion other than the site context and adjacencies and general form-based questions on compliance?
I'll have a question on the form-based code precedent that we're setting tonight. I just want to ask a few questions about that.
Okay, thank you. We'll put that with that second grouping. Okay. Okay, let's go to the first one, site context and adjacencies. Corner, I don't even know how to pronounce that word, Commissioner Hughes, triance?
Triangle. It was, I was Google, Google messed it up, triangle.
Okay, triangle. All right, corner triangle lot outside the form-based code, any discussion? Commissioner Bagley.
Yeah, I just have a question, Commissioner Hughes. I'm assuming there was some outreach to the House that is extremely close to the site, and if so, was there any feedback or concerns, and were those concerns addressed? Thank you.
So, Matt can speak more broadly about that, all the proper noticing that has to be published, but also, there is a community meeting that is held, I know the applicant held prior, with the Alcova Heights Civic Association, was his most adjacent one, Commissioner I will also say that this is not the first time, nor will it be the last time, that a form-based code project is, has an adjacency to a low residential development zone, and it is always shocking to me, Commissioner Bagley, the embracing of the density that goes on on my neighbors on the Pike. So, I'll simply say it that way. It's rather interesting. And Mr. Matusik, if you have more to add, I'll let you speak too.
Yeah, and I do want to direct some of this to the applicant in terms of any specific outreach that may have occurred outside of our regular protocol in terms of the groups and meetings that we schedule. I do know that beyond the residents that are immediately north of this property, we've actually had a lot of advisory working group members and other residents, I think, be very mindful of that condition between the redevelopment and the adjacent single-family homes, particularly Linda Dye, who's a very staunch advocate of the form-based code, and she actually helped us and others to really improve some of the landscaping and buffering conditions along that alley there. So, in addition to, I think, the retaining wall, there's some additional fencing and those landscape improvements that really help buffer this development and some of the loading and parking that are anticipated from the rear alley to the surrounding property owners to the north, which currently have their own fencing, as I understand it. This would kind of provide some redundancy, if you will, in terms of the buffering and minimizing any impacts across the lot lines.
Yes, okay. Any other questions on this topic? All right, so now we will, is that right? Okay. Commissioner Sarley, let's go to your precedents question.
So, thank you, the applicant, thank you, staff, for running this, and thank you, Commissioner Hughes, for, I did attend the meeting, the form-based code meeting where we discussed this project, and I just want to make sure, and I want to verify with Matt, that this is a, not a precedent setting. I disagree a little bit with the characterization that this is improving the form-based code. I think the notion of transition from a higher density to a single-family home has been very well thought out on the form-based code, and I think the unique instance of this site and the way that site was assembled warrants this change. But I would like to just articulate that I think the form-based code transitioning from Main Street to, like, I think residential streets, I forget the terminology, is a really good approach and one that benefits the community as a whole. I will be voting to support this, however, because I do think it's a good solution. And the other point that I was going to make was, oh, yeah, so the question for Matt is, like, we're not foreseeing this happening in any future applications, are we?
We are not. The applicant actually highlighted the more typical practice that we have seen many applicants utilize, which is the 50-foot extension of any of those four frontage types in either direction to, I think, better suit, I think, the development program. So, from that perspective, we don't anticipate this setting a precedent in that regard. Every potential request that could come forward in the future would require its own site analysis, additional massing, sun and shade studies, and we may arrive at a different answer, depending on what the actual site circumstances might be. I think the benefit of having this type of option where we can study this further with the benefit of an architect and engineer at the table is that it provides us an opportunity to go a step further than what I think maybe a perhaps limitation of the form-based code is, in that it does not have the benefit at the time of adoption, which is 2003 in this case, of kind of forecasting the exact site consolidation that redevelopment may require as it comes in, and instead, I think, looking to more kind of guide redevelopment at a block level. So, the fact that the Wendy's site, for example, here is not being incorporated as one large footprint, or maybe a series of buildings, that does present some challenges in terms of the number of individual buildings that otherwise would need to be required on the site, should we remain with the existing regulating plan. So, those type of things, I think, you know, we've been able to work out through the form-based code amendment process, which is less predictable because the data will get us to the right answer. And in this case, it just so happened that we were able to demonstrate that the proposal in front of us would have the similar, if not almost identical, impact that the current regulations apply in this particular instance. But that's not to say that other sites in the future might yield a different outcome.
Thanks. I think I fundamentally agree with what you just said, although I will put in a chip for the notion of master plans, you know, benefiting from the whole as opposed to individual parts. So, if we start to tweak every single lot, or, you know, not every single lot, but significant amount of lots, the whole starts to fall apart. So, you know, I'm just going to put a plug in for the form-based code and say that, you know, we ought to be a little resistant to too much adaptation. Thanks again.
Okay, any other comments on general form-based code, questions or compliance? Right, Commissioner Hughes, let's go to motions.
As always, we begin with the vacations that none of us get. So, I move, does the Planning Commission find that the proposed vacation of a portion of a 12-foot alley running southwest from South Glebe Road towards South Lincoln Street along the parcel lines between Lot 9 and parts of Lot 1, 2, 12, and 13, Block 1, Alcova Heights, is substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan or applicable part thereof?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Lynn Tellme. Any discussion? All right, let's go to votes. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye, the motion carries nine to zero. Second motion, please.
I move the Planning, I move the Planning Commission adopt the attached ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify the Arlington County zoning ordinance, Article 11.1 CP-FBC, Columbia Pike Form-Based Code District's Appendix A to amend the town center regulating plan from a local to a Main Street building envelope standard designation along South Lincoln Street for the property 3401 Columbia Pike, as shown in Attachment 2 to the staff report.
Any second?
Second.
I second.
Commissioner Schroll?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I don't believe that Commissioner Hughes included the language at the beginning that the, I recommend that the county board adopt, so I would ask unanimous consent to add that language to Commissioner Hughes's recommendation.
Any objection? Okay, so the motion is amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll.
Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye, the motion carries 10 to zero, and Commissioner Hughes, final motion?
Thank you. I move the Planning Commission recommend the county board approve the subject use permit in accordance with the Columbia Pike Form-Based Code FBC, Article 11.1 of zoning ordinance for the development of a six-story mixed-use apartment building containing a total of 250 units and a shared below-grade parking garage, subject to the conditions of the staff report dated February 18, 2023, oh, excuse me, January 27, 2023.
Any objection? I mean, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garen. All right, any discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel, aye, the motion carries 10 to zero. Anything else, Commissioner Hughes?
I want to thank Matt, of course, from our staff side, for all the hard work they've done to review the proposal, and again, our applicant this evening. I look forward to seeing this building at the corner of Columbia Pike and Glebe, a prominent corner in our county, and to be somewhat different, both in materiality and color. So, I appreciate KGD, the architect, bringing something new to our vision. So, with that, thank you, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Matusik, thank you, Ms. Riley and your team, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there another item on our agenda?
Yes. The third item is request to adopt the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan update and element of the Arlington Comprehensive Plan to reflect the full scope of current policies and procedures that address the county's regulatory Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act requirements per the Virginia Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act requiring local governments to review and revise their Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan as a component of their comprehensive plan, Sections 62.1 through 44.15 and 74 and 9, VAC 25-830-170. We have a staff presentation and no public speakers and no applicant.
Thank you very much. Thank you, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. So, my name is Ty Asfaw, I'm in the Department of Environmental Services in the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management, and I'm in the same department as Lily. We've been working on this Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan for about two years now, and we're here in front of the Planning Commission to recommend, asking the Planning Commission to recommend adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan implementation update as part of the county board's adoption process. It's our intent to ask the board to adopt this plan on February 18. We've been working on this plan, as I mentioned, for two years, and we have an existing Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan. It is, it was published in 2001, and it's part of the comprehensive plan. Since 2001, there have been many changes in the county in how we manage stormwater, and what we've done with this plan is updated it to reflect current policies and programs to protect the Chesapeake Bay.
Thank you, Ty. Again, my name is Lily Whitesell, also with Arlington DES. Please apologize, I have to apologize for my voice. So, this may look familiar to commissioners from our presentation last month, but for others who are seeing this for the first time, a little background about where this is coming from. The Chesapeake Bay Act was Virginia legislation originally enacted in 1988 with updates since then. It's focused on protecting water quality through land use management. From that came, on one hand, a requirement for Arlington County to adopt a local Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, which we did, and also coming out of the Bay Act was the requirement to adopt a comprehensive plan element, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan, and Arlington's original plan was adopted in 2001. We also want to clarify this point, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan is completely separate from and actually predates the nutrient and sediment reduction requirements for the Chesapeake Bay total maximum daily load. If there are any questions, be happy to revisit this slide and explain it a little bit more.
So, why are we updating this plan now? So, it's been around since 2001. The Virginia Department of Environmental Quality audited our program, the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Program, in 2020, 2021. They visited construction sites, they reviewed permits that have been approved, and they reviewed the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan and the ordinance, and they noted that the plan is outdated, and as required by the Bay Act, it needs to be kept current. So, we are under corrective action by DEQ, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, to have an updated plan early this year, and that's why we've kind of kept our focus and the scope very narrow to ensure we're meeting the deadline, and because of that, we haven't introduced any new policy. So, we've mentioned resource protection areas a few times. As you can see in that diagram, basically, resource protection areas are the buffer areas from streams and water bodies, and they are protected in that we do additional review for projects that are in resource protection areas. So, the blue line there is a stream, an imaginary stream, 100-foot buffer from there is a resource protection area. In Arlington County, several homes are already in the resource protection area because the, this regulation sort of came after development. But the area outside the resource protection area is also protected, and it's noted as a resource management area. So, the whole county is a resource management area, and then about 2% of the land area or 2% of the homes in the county are within resource protection areas. So, what are we required to do as part of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan? We're supposed to have updated maps. So, the RPA maps have been updated since 2018, have been updated in 2018, so we've included those maps. Additionally, there are floodplain maps, soil maps, impervious cover maps, streams and watershed maps, and other maps that have also been included as part of the plan update. As part of our process, we also looked at planning and policy documents that are available. There have been several more documents, so there's the stormwater master plan, there's a draft forestry and natural resources plan that is in development currently, and a public space master plan that was finalized a few years ago. So, we looked at all these plans and made sure that we referenced, incorporated relevant sections of those plans into the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan. So, a lot has happened since 2001, so we've highlighted some of the main items that have taken place, some major milestones. The stormwater program in the county has grown, both as a result of the stormwater regulations around the country have changed due to regulatory requirements, and the county has also taken measures to protect the Chesapeake Bay. And you'll see there are several permits that have been issued by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, land disturbance activity permits that have been improved more currently, like last year or two years ago now. So, maps have been updated, so there's several things that have taken place since 2001.
Thank you, Ty. So, here you have a summary of how we updated the plan to be consistent with the current policies and programs for each of the required components, from expanding the resource protection areas to minimizing impacts of development, to documenting current conditions via maps, as Ty mentioned. Here, again, are just two of those maps included in the plan. The map on the left shows the resource protection areas in red along the streams, this Potomac River wetlands and other sensitive areas. The map on the right shows how we've extended resource protection areas to also include adjacent steep slopes, and that was a policy decision implemented locally. In our engagement process, we consulted both internal and external stakeholders. We started with an initial public meeting in March 2022, and then in late spring 2022, we gathered feedback from across departmental internal stakeholder group. We worked to incorporate those comments into the plan, and we also included the plan update as part of our presentations to various commissions throughout that time period. In July, we released the draft plan to gather community feedback and incorporated that into the plan as well. In October, we presented to both EnergyI, the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group, and the Long Range Planning Commission. And as I mentioned, we've worked to incorporate those comments and feedback received into the document, both internal and external. We received a request to expand our coordination with the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, which we did. We were pleased to receive a letter of support from the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission. There were also some requests to expand the scope of the plan, but when we explained the regulatory requirements and other reasons for the current scope, folks did understand. So, ultimately, again, this plan is, update is triggered by regulatory requirements. It's more of an administrative or implementation update, so this document, it was not going to be setting any new policy, but it does align the plan with our current program. We appreciate the Planning Commission's recommendation from last month, and as Ty mentioned, tonight, we're asking the Planning Commission to recommend adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan as part of the county board's adoption process. And if you can handle my voice for one more sentence, we would be happy to take any questions from you all.
Okay, thank you. So, there are no public speakers on this matter, so the matter, and, yeah, there's Are there any, on the, are there any commission reports? No. Why don't we just do free-for-all? Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Weir?
Can I take you up on that offer to show us that, what the plan is and isn't slide again? I just didn't get enough, that seems like an extremely informative slide, and I would just like another 30 or 45 seconds with it.
Sure, happy to. So again, sort of, over here. So in the previous slide, I had kind of talked about, okay, so there's the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act as passed by the State of Virginia, Commonwealth of Virginia, and that is what gave rise to both the preservation ordinance as well as the preservation plan. So both of those are coming out of that. The, there is sort of some separate things going on that also have the name Chesapeake Bay in them, and so it can be easily confused with this effort. So the EPA Chesapeake Bay Total Maximum Daily Load, which regulates all of the Chesapeake Bay states and requires certain reductions of nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment, you know, those kind of filter down through the states, right, to localities like Arlington County. So our nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment reductions are required through our stormwater permit, also known as MS4 municipal, separate storm sewer system, I'm getting that correct, permit, and that's, again, issued by Virginia DEQ, and it's, it also incorporates those reductions as part of the permit. And we have a TMDL Action Plan, which of course was up to be updated last year, which provide no end of confusion, and that is updated together with the stormwater permit. Does that help?
It does. The only thing that I, that I would have been interested to see related here, and this is a two-cent suggestion, so it's not even convertible to actual dollars, is to have some bullets that on the overlap and disconnect between the, what the plan covers and what the ordinance covers. And the only reason I even suggest that is because there has been a lot of talk about the ordinance in relating, in relation to other discussions that are happening, and I think that it's on the front of people's minds, but that's, that's very much a, you know, a take-or-to留 suggestion, and thank you for the excellent presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so may I?
Commissioner Hughes has his hand raised, sorry.
Commissioner Hughes, thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Patel. I was hoping staff could sort of answer my question, and I posed it a while back, and I understand this is a great slide to leave into this. You know, as it moves forward with our compliance with, as you say, the daily loads, the MS4 permit, which gets into ours, what if any place does land preservation outside of the county have in meeting our goals as a community for producing and better improving the Chesapeake Bay as a whole? The reason I ask that is, you know, we are a very dense urban community, which has different issues, and we, we can do that. But, you know, I think, you know, we have almost 100 acres in Loudoun County currently, which is owned more or less through the county through varying mays. What if any methods can we utilize to improve the bay through land trust and preservation outside of the county? Is that possible at all? Staff could maybe opine upon that for a minute, I appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Kristin Jolker, and I work with both Lilly and Ty. You know, I think you can appreciate that locally, our influence is, is through our Northern Virginia combined efforts. There have been combined efforts for green space planning and those kinds of things through the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and I would say that is the best place for us to affect those kinds of policies locally.
Has there been any outreach further beyond the Northern Virginia region, given that the Chesapeake Bay is almost all the way down to Rockingham County and then all the way out to Northumberland and Lancaster County? In the, just the Potomac watershed?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are certainly groups that are working Potomac Riverwide. I think that at the state level, there is certainly focus on the larger watersheds and their overall health. Yeah, so I think there certainly is focus there as well.
I just would continue to encourage staff to think broader and bigger than, than just Nova in finding solutions for making the, the quote "bay" better for everyone across the state, because I think that they are, are possible out there, and we can bring financial resources to bear that many parts of the state would find astonishing. Thanks, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the County Board that they adopt the attached resolution to the staff report dated January 23, 2023, to update the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Plan as shown in Attachment 1.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Okay, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Geren?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Schroll?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
The motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think that that concludes all of the presentations. Now we're at PC Business.
That's right, yes.
So we have a couple of things I wanted to just kind of resolve, all the things that we needed to vote on before we move on to our reports, and I'm going to seek unanimous consent on them as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I did have two potential amendments to the, to the minutes from the January 11 meeting.
That's fine.
So on page 6, right above the paragraph that says Chairs Report, where I am seconding the motion, I was doing so for the purposes of discussion. And then where Commissioner Patel is proposing the motion to table, it's, it either needs to be a, I think, a unanimous consent request, which I think was what it was, Madam Chair. Okay, so that should be a unanimous consent request from Madam Chair to table that motion, which was approved. Because without it, doesn't make sense, because there isn't a second in that sentence. And with that, Madam Chair, that's my.
Okay, wonderful. With this amendment, I'm going to seek unanimous consent for approval of the January, these are the January 11 minutes. Any objection? Okay, so the January 11 minutes are approved. How about the January 9? Commissioner Schroll, is there an edit on that one? No? Okay. I seek unanimous consent for approval of the January 9 meeting minutes. Any objection? So those minutes are approved. The, I'm going to go back to, we didn't, we didn't accept the 2022 year-end report, so I'm going to seek unanimous consent to accept the 2022 year-end report. Any objection? Seeing none? Seeing no objection, the report is accepted. I'm going to seek unanimous consent to approve the calendar for Planning Commission representation to County Board meetings in 2023. Any objection? Okay, so those, that calendar is approved, and I am seeking unanimous consent to approve the 2023 liaison assignments. Any objection? No objection, and so those liaison assignments are approved as well. So now, just a quick few things to wind us up for tonight, because tonight's our only meeting, remember. Site Plan Review Committee, Commissioner Peterson, any reports? Oh, wait, do we have any rosters? Thank you.
Yes, we have two rosters to adopt by hopefully unanimous consent and then one to amend. So colleagues, you recently received proposed SPRC subgroup rosters for Wells, I'm sorry.
No, that's just Commissioner Steinberger moving.
For Wells Fargo Verizon and Crystal Towers 3. Madam Chair, I ask for your unanimous consent in approving these rosters.
Okay, any objection? So those rosters are approved?
Perfect. And then, colleagues, you recently received the proposed SPRC subgroup roster amendments for Project Boston Holiday Inn. Madam Chair, I ask for unanimous consent to amend that previously adopted roster.
Any objection? So the rosters are amended?
Okay, perfect. And then if I can just say, as, so I sent you all a report for February of all of the projects we have going on. We are getting to have lower commissioner numbers while we also continue to have a lot of projects, so if you do have capacity to do more than one project at a time, we already have a few people who are, have already taken that on, but if you do have capacity to do two projects, please let me know, and I will gladly assign you something. But if you can only do one at a time, I respect that, and we'll work with staff to see what alternatives we have. Thank you.
And I will just note here that we have some applications that have come in, and I will, I just want to make a note that I appreciate Commissioner Weir, who has met with many of the applicants. I don't want to say how many, because I just want you guys to know that we are, especially you, Commissioner Peterson, we are actively trying to get people onto our commission, I promise you, even as recently as having a conversation today. So we are hopeful that we will be able to get some discussions finalized, with the hope that we can onboard people in March, but I, I too worry with your email that you sent out earlier today about we might not be able to see anybody necessarily until April, but we will continue to do the best we can, and thank you so much for continuing to lead our SPRC process. Long Range Planning Committee?
Yes, we have a meeting that is scheduled for February 28, and that will be for us to discuss the upcoming meeting, work, work plan meeting for CPHD that would be before the County Board in early March, so we can discuss what our priorities would be that we would recommend for CPHD to be working on.
Thank you. Zoko?
Turn this on. So we had a great meeting on January 17 about stormwater management, and we addressed some of the issues on the S3A about essentially transition some of the infrastructure from a major utility to a minor utility, which I think will add some flexibility to fencing and some of the utility sort of battery packs and whatnot. We also talked about retaining walls and fences and things like that. So that is all about encroaching. Also, the other thing was encroaching on setbacks with benches and light fixtures and fencing and gates. So it was a really good, really productive meeting. Thanks for the people that, the members that were able to attend. And then the other thing is, there's an ongoing text amendment, you know, and they're reviewing all of the zoning language, just making sure things sort of coordinate and don't have conflict, which I guess that's fairly routine. Our next meeting is on Valentine's Day, so if anyone wants to come out on Valentine's Day, it'll be about market resiliency.
Wonderful. PFRC? That's you?
Yes, that is me. No updates, still expecting Career Center to come back later this year. I don't know exactly how later, but later.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes, on the AUG?
The only thing to note is that Mr. Matusik will be moving to second place for our staff liaison, and Olivia Suntak has taken the new role as our lead for the Form-Based Code area, so we're welcoming to working with her this year.
Okay, so that is officially all of the business. I do want to take a moment, in addition to thanking Chair Weir, or excuse me, Commissioner Weir, for all of his efforts in trying to find us some new commissioners. We have a present for you. For all of your leadership last year, we thank you for everything you've done in your chairmanship.
We wrapped it.
And by we, I do mean.
It's original box.
I do mean others.
Oh, lovely. Thank you. This is a, it's a gavel with my name and, and the year on it. Thank you all very much. It was, I'll, I'll just refer to what I had said a couple months ago, but it was a pleasure to serve. I actually have something for you, which you've already seen. It was really more of a promise than a threat, your own copy of Robert's Rules of Order with the Stanley Cup names of recent chairs on it.
Thank you, and I refuse to use this while Commissioner Schroll is on the commission. Listen, I didn't, I was not speaking the truth. We forgot one thing. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, for keeping us in line. We have this one final motion about speaker times, and so I'm going to read the motion, and then we can have any discussion that I, that we are interested in having. I'm going to move that we amend our bylaws, section or Article 4, to add Paragraph 10. Well, that's a good question. I didn't really want to do it. Okay, we're going to move it as a policy. As a, as a policy of the Planning Commission, I move that individual, that we amend speaking times to provide as follows. Individuals interested in commenting on matters before the Planning Commission will have a maximum speaking time of two minutes. Representatives of county-approved commissions or advisory boards interested in commenting on matters before the Planning Commission also will have a maximum speaking time, or I'm sorry, will have a maximum speaking time of three minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Just as a, as a point of order, a tabled motion continues on, so this would be, the, the text of the motion is fine, it's just that it should be, it should be a substitute motion.
Okay, so do I need to correct that, Commissioner Schroll?
I think you should just.
I think we did it.
Withdraw and restate, you didn't recognize a second.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't, okay. I'm going to withdraw and offer the following motion as a substitute motion. Individuals interested in commenting on matters before the Planning Commission will have a maximum speaking time of two minutes. Representatives of county-approved commissions or advisory boards interested in commenting on matters before the Planning Commission will have a maximum speaking time of three minutes. Is there a second on the substituted motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Is there any discussion? Okay, oh, go ahead.
I understand what we're doing here. I guess I was just thinking through a little bit, and I support the motion, I'm not against the motion, but I think, you know, I'm a little nervous that we're fixing a problem or we're making a solution for a problem that we're not sure exists. I think we do have, like, you know, with the MMH, we had a large contingent of speakers, you know, so I, I think clarity in managing people's expectation is good, but I'm just, I'm just a little concerned that, you know, our job here is to represent the community as a whole, and I'll leave it at that. But I, you know, I think, I think it's a good thing to manage people's expectation. I'm just not sure that we're really addressing a problem just by way of sort of a thought.
And I will just say, I think it's beyond, for me, it's beyond any conversations, including missing middle or anything else that's coming before the Planning Commission. I think that what we keep facing is this, we're constantly trying to figure out who is an organization, who is, you know, which box do people fit in? I think for me, this is an equity issue, making sure that people understand that we're not, you know, it's not a hierarchy, right? And so I think that we just need to provide some clarity. Any, just, go ahead, Commissioner Bagley.
I've spent a lot of time at that podium as a civic association president in a civic association that had a whole lot of stuff going on, and I think two minutes for an individual who can also write chapters that we will read, and as a former civic association president, I never used five minutes. I couldn't have come up with five minutes of stuff, especially after all the letters. I think two and three minutes is fair for everybody. That's, that's my personal opinion.
Are we ready?
I'll just say that I think that the, the amount of time and whether or not, you know, speakers get the, individuals get the same as organizations, for me, the thing that matters the most is just having a policy that we can point to, and the ability to manage expectations. We know that it's going to, we know of at least one instance when we're going to have to be able to point to something coming up, and we never, we don't know when it's going to happen again. I think a lot of people wouldn't have expected the turnout that we got for the. I think a lot of people wouldn't have expected the turnout that we got for the Pentagon City Sector Plan, right? And so it's just, you know, there are always going to be questions, and then we have to exercise discretion, and different chairs, different years can exercise discretion in different ways. I just think it's better if we, you know, if we don't like the amount of time, we can change it. But, you know, I think we owe it to people to be able to point to something and say, this is what's going to happen.
Okay.
A question, Madam Chair. At our previous, our previous meeting, there was a fair amount of discussion about having sign up a certain amount of time before the meeting to aid staff, aid the chair.
We passed that one. We passed that the last meeting.
We did.
Well, sorry. To complete your thought. Well, so did we decide on like the 5:00 PM? Is that what we decided?
It was 24 hours before the meeting.
24 hours advance? Okay. That's helpful. And then?
I would just note, though, we had.
Thanks for refreshing my recollection.
Yeah, so there was some discretion in that. And we had, as Mr. Byrne pointed out this evening, he was, he missed that deadline, and we, because of the agenda, we were able to accommodate him speaking, right? So.
Right, because it was, that it wouldn't guarantee your participation, correct? But it would at least, okay, right.
Right.
Good, good, okay. And I support the amendment.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So are we ready to vote? Oh, Commissioner Peterson.
So I just had a question, because I'm looking at the language that was sent around earlier. So representatives of county-approved commissions or advisory boards interested in commenting get three minutes. Would that include civic associations? Is a civic association a county-approved commissioner or advisory board? So civic associations would now get two minutes.
Correct. Everybody gets two minutes except for the county-approved boards and. Okay, thank you, thank you. Are we ready? Yes. It's always these internal policies.
So are we, county-approved includes county-manager-approved and county-board-approved, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Ready? Bagley?
Aye.
Garen?
Aye.
Steinberger?
Aye.
Weir?
Aye.
Scholl?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sarley?
Aye.
Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Hughes?
Aye.
Patel? Aye. The motion carries 10 to 0. Hey, thanks, friends, for a wonderful evening. Thank you for a very productive meeting tonight. And let me just close with something here. The matters that were heard this evening will be before the county board on February 18th. Representing Planning Commission will be Commissioner Scholl. Thank you very much for doing that, Commissioner Scholl. Thank you to the staff, applicants, members of the public for your time, consideration, and patience. Thank you all, thank you also to the staff who worked diligently to make tonight's in-person and hybrid meeting possible. The commission is now adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, guys.